Good evening and welcome to the Superintendent Contract Subcommittee Meeting of the Brockton School Committee. Today is November 16th, 2021. We have two items on the agenda. Presentation of the Superintendent End-of-Cycle Evaluation and then any other business to come before this Subcommittee. So if it's all right, I'll go ahead and get started with the presentation of the Superintendent's evaluation. Bring my water. Yes. Yeah, we're getting, we're getting high-tech here. Get that out of the way because I tend to trip over things. Okay. So we'll start off in just a minute with just a high-level overview of the process. Again, I know that the committee is familiar with it, as we're a key part of it. But just for the public's knowledge of how that works, the committee by contract is required to do an evaluation of the superintendent every year. And I'll show you the criteria that's laid out by DESI in a second. And then, so we do that, that evaluation. Each member of the committee submits their comments and their scoring. And then that gets put into this presentation and the scores get accumulated into basically a factor that ends up working out to a pay increase for the superintendent, as is dictated by the contract. So, all right. Oh, wait. Okay. Wait a minute. All right, good. All right, I think we're okay now. So these, this is the general process here. The superintendent is evaluated on progress towards achievement of the goals. We have the student learning goal, professional practice goals, and then there are two to four district improvement goals. And then, performance on each of the standards is in the DESI's Superintendent and District Administrator Rubric, which is, I'm going to show next. And then, the, let's see, has this got a pointer on it? Perfect. So then over here, this is just kind of the cycle of how the process works. There's self-assessment, analysis, goal-setting, plan development, implementation. There's a mid-cycle review, and then this is the end-of-cycle evaluation. Again, this is the superintendent rubric. So there's, we'll go through each standard and what the comments and feedback from the committee was. And then within there are different goals within those standards. So again, the evaluation process is the review of the goals. The superintendent, a few months back, presented evidence and then made that evidence available electronically through Teams for the committee's review. We evaluated the evidence. And then now here today is the presentation of ratings and feedback. All right. So, "Insure students and their teachers have access to high-quality, research-based, instructional resource across all content areas. Resources must support a shift from remote to hybrid teaching and learning, culminating in a transition back into in-person teaching and learning." Again, you know, it's been this interesting time of COVID where we've had to shift into different modes of learning. And with this goal, we have, this is connected to the following standards within the rubric. Standard one is the instructional leadership. Standard two, management and operations. Standard three, family and community engagement. And then, standard four is the professional culture part of it. And again, I don't want to just stand here and read the entire slide to you, but the summary on the instructional leadership, right? Educational leader promotes the learning growth of all students, success of staff, cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus. And standard two, promotes the learning and growth of all students, success of all staff by ensuring safe, efficient, effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing scheduling. Standard three, promote the learning and growth of all students, success of staff, effective partnerships with families, community organizations, other stakeholders that support the mission of the district. And finally, standard four, promote the success, promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuing learning for staff. Okay, so, on the first one, "Insure students and their teachers have access to high-quality, research-based, instructional resources across all content areas. These resources must support a shift from remote to hybrid teaching to, and learning to culminate into a transition to in-person teaching and learning." So, the overall rating from the committee was that the superintendent met this goal. And then some of the comment from the committee, "Students were not able to attend in-person because of the global pandemic. The district was able to implement remote learning very quickly for all students in grades kindergarten through 12. This remote model switched to a hybrid model and then finally back to in-person. There was a lot of communication within the community and teachers through this process." Another committee member commented, "Superintendent Thomas definitely creates a shared vision with the BPS educators that allows for high-quality instruction for the students." For the professional practice goal, excuse me. And so again, we talked, we looked at this earlier, "Build a collaborative professional culture in which all stakeholders are invested in a shared vision that prioritizes student academic success and social and emotional wellness." All right. And on this professional practice goal, the rating was that the superintendent met this goal. And I've got a couple of comments from the committee. "The superintendent is a particularly good listener and communicator. The district is invested in the student's social and emotional wellness. Several school adjustment councils have been added to this year's budget and more will be added to next year's budget because of funds, because funds allow it. And the Superintendent Thomas understands the need to support the whole child." Another comment, "The district is also working with DESE on turnaround practices that will help close achievement gaps and target students with the greatest need." And finally, "Mike certainly met this goal. More than ever, the professional culture and collaboration of all stakeholders came through. The commitment to student success and social emotional wellness in the district showed probably more than ever during these unprecedented times." Okay, so, review the organizational culture and climate in the Brockton Public Schools and its impact on instructional environment. So on culture and context, the score the committee gave was that the superintendent met this goal. And comment from the committee, "The superintendent implemented a two-part training on equity and diversity in curriculum, materials, and instructional practices. This training helps to increase cultural proficiency among staff and prepares them to meet the needs of our diverse learners." Another comment, "Superintendent Thomas fosters a beneficial climate and culture within the Brockton Public Schools, as is evidenced by his leadership, open communication, and ability to collaborate with others internally and externally." And again, the superintendent met this goal. Next, we have "Insure's organizational efficiency and effectiveness to streamline operations and support all schools." Just, excuse me, one minute. All right. So on this goal, some progress was made here. The superintendent made the changes he could within the restrictions brought on by the pandemic. "I am confident the FY22 budget," or, I'm sorry, I am confident in the F, I should say N, "in the FY22 budget we have passed will help the superintendent make significant progress in the coming year." The superintendent is committed to operating a BPS transportation department that will save millions of dollars on buses, allowing us to do more in the way of field trips and transportation of our students for academic and music program events. On this goal, the committee gave the superintendent an overall score that said that he met this goal. On operations and finance, strengthen operations and finance effectiveness. Fiscal, human resources, facilities, communications, transportation, and information technology. Okay. And the committee said that the superintendent met this goal as well. And some of the comment from the committee, "The superintendent and this committee had been anticipating Student Opportunity Act, or SOA, funds prior to the pandemic. Not only did the SOA funding get delayed a year, but the rest of our budget was in question as well. The district had to prepare three learning models in response to the pandemic, hybrid, remote, or full-in-person learning. This meant resources had to be acquired and prepared for all three scenarios, and staff had to be trained. Additionally, there was a lot of moving parts. The superintendent led the district through all of this, adjusting plans as needed." All right, on instructional leadership, "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students..."
Hold on a second. Who has a Prius out there? Your lights are on inside the, all your lights are on inside it. I don't want your battery to go.
Ooh, that would not be...
Continue, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. That was important. All right. So, "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling." The committee gave the superintendent a score of proficient on this topic, on this, this area, on this standard, rather. "Superintendent Thomas has used his years of being a Brockton Public Schools employee to his advantage. He gets it. He understands what being an educator is all about. He is always willing to work with others to create a focus on beneficial educational efforts." Standard two, within management and operations, "Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling." The committee gave the superintendent a score of proficient on this standard. And one of the comments was, "The superintendent and his team, including the school committee, understands the need to enhance the growth opportunities and ability to foster success within the Brockton Public Schools, as is evidenced by entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This realization and understanding is helping to charter a new beneficial course for students and staff." All right. Standard three, "Promotes the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district." And the committee, on this standard, gave the superintendent a score of proficient. One member commented, "The student, along with the communication director, worked together to report the most up-to-date information to the committee about school happenings using surveys, regular emails, calls to homes, and meetings." Another comment, "The superintendent has greatly improved the family and community engagement in the district. He has several groups he meets with regularly to gain input on various areas of concern. Mike truly has an open-door policy for community members and staff." Standard four, "Promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff." The committee gave the superintendent a score of proficient on this standard. And one of the comments, "Mike Thomas promotes success via beneficial attitude and culture for all within the Brockton Public Schools, for all students and employees. He's a true professional and a role model for others." Another comment, "The district has continuous learning for all staff and is provided through ongoing professional development." So the overall rating, this is an overall rating of the superintendent's performance, taking into account all evidence presented for the goals and performance standards. And the overall rating that the committee gave the superintendent was proficient. The superintendent's, and these are some of the comments from the committee, "The superintendent's leadership during this pandemic has been outstanding without question. From negotiations with every bargaining unit as conditions changed to rolling out remote learning, being able to make good decisions under pressure, Superintendent Thomas has navigated and led the district through this unprecedented time." Another committee member said, "This past year showed Mike's natural leadership abilities more than I think we normally would have seen. He led in a way you would expect a seasoned superintendent would lead." Another comment, "I truly believe that BPS is fortunate to have Mike Thomas as the superintendent. He is a product of BPS, and he has been a dedicated employee within the system for decades. I have had the distinct opportunity to work with him on a daily basis. His drive and determination to create a positive and rewarding opportunities is exceptional." And finally, "The future of BPS is great, due in large, in large part to Mike's leadership and his collaboration with others, both in and out of the system." All right. So that's the end-of-cycle review. And the next steps, just to finish up, so there's the mid-cycle review, which will happen in January. And at that point, the superintendent analyzes the data and evidence collected up to that point. And the evaluation cycle prepares his assessment of progress on each of the goals in the superintendent's annual plan. The assessment of progress is presented to the school committee as an agenda item at a regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee. And then the superintendent and the school committee review and discuss the report and evidence. This will take place during the same meeting at which the superintendent presents his or her assessment of progress. You might remember a few months back, we started this current process with this. And then they'll be sharing relevant feedback, develop a clear understanding of the process being, being made on each goal, and then achieve an agreement on what, if any, mid-course adjustments might need to be made. Any questions? All right. All right. So that's it for the PowerPoint. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So the next and final part of this, everybody should have, does everybody have this document? So this is the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report. And this is kind of the compiling of all of the scores that we gave, the number scores. And you have the, within this, I mean, you have the summary on top, but within this, you actually have the data from each, each standard. And it all works out to a score or an average of 3.13. And if I am not mistaken, then that would result in a 3.13% pay and increase in pay for the superintendent. And that would actually be effective back to July 1 of this year. So, and there were a few reasons that, you know, we didn't get this done over the summer. But we, Mike and I agreed, we'd wait till we got school open, and then school opening had its bumps. And so, you know, we, we decided that we wanted to work some of those things out as a priority and that we would, you know, obviously we'll get to this, which we, which we did. But, so finally, and I know I've thrown a lot at the committee tonight, the final thing that I'd like to put out there to the committee, and Mike and I have had a conversation about this, is extending his contract. You know, I think it'd be good for the system with all of the changes that we've been dealing with, with all of the changes yet to come, with the plans that we're putting in place with DESE, which got delayed. Again, that hasn't even fully been brought to the committee for approval. I mean, that, you know, we're a year and a half at least behind on that process of where we would have been. So I think it's important that we make sure that we're going to have adequate time for all of that to be implemented. So again, I'd like to see us offer an extension. We talked about two years. So I just thought I'd throw that out there at the committee as well. Any questions? Thoughts?
Was this contract due?
This was a six-year, right?
Yes.
Right. No, five? Aldo?
We did a one, there's an interim and five.
Oh, is a one, isn't it interim and then five? Okay. So when is, you're up in 2025?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, right. So this, if we did do, offer the extension, that would take him through 2027. And then whoever is sitting in these seats in 2027 can decide what happens from there. So, any questions on the evaluation from the committee? All right. I'd certainly like to thank a few people, all of the committee members who participated in the evaluation. That's not something that you whip through in 15 minutes. As all of you know, that is a time-consuming process. It requires a lot of thoughtful consideration, review of evidence. And so I appreciate everybody that took the time to, to do that. And, you know, I also want to thank Carrie Kopp and Dr. Connors for their involvement, their role in that. They really helped me out a lot. You know, I get to stand in front of the camera and put the presentation up, but behind the scenes, they really had a lot to do, a big role in the whole evaluation process and how, and the tool that we used, and also the presentation that I just gave. So, thank you again, Dr. Connors and Carrie. And then the superintendent, I want to thank you again. You put all that evidence together and, you know, and you've done a spectacular job, as I think the committee all agree, based on that evaluation. You know, you are always, and I mean always, available. I mean, last week I sent you a text at 1:00 in the morning. You didn't answer at 1:00, but you still answered at like 4:30, which... So, and, and we've had conversations that have started at 6:00 in the morning, you know, hour. So, you know, I just want people to know that this guy's always on the job. I don't think he ever stops. So, but at any rate, so I don't know if you wanted to...
Yeah, I just, I thank you, you know, for a great evaluation. But, you know, people really have to understand that if it wasn't for the school committee's support, you could not just do this job as superintendent. Several superintendents that I started with three years ago in my cohort have dropped out. And a lot of them have left their jobs after two years. And most of it was because of the relationships they had with their local school committee and it just didn't go well, especially during a pandemic. So, you know, it's, it's the relationship that I have with you. And you push me to make sure I do what's right for kids and staff. And you always make decisions and make sure that I'm making decisions in the best interest of kids. So without that relationship and the support of the committee, you know, I wouldn't be able to do my job well at all. And, you know, I want to thank my team, my executive team, and the staff of the Brockton Public Schools and the support of the families who are all great. But, you know, a lot of the money that we're enjoying this year and in years to come has been the sweat, blood, sweat, and tears of Superintendent Smith before me and members of this committee that spent a ton of time on, you know, on the, at the State House. All of you have done that. You rallied the parents, you filed lawsuits, you spent hours, all of you really making sure that the state funded us right. It has been a long battle. And I'm fortunate that, even though I started in a pandemic hit, I'm fortunate to be able to, you know, reap the benefits of having a budget that for the next, at least for the next five or six years would be beneficial to the students of Brockton. And I know that Kathy before me didn't have that benefit, but her work and the work of this committee is the reason why, you know, we'll have the money going forward to really support our students. So again, it's not just one person. You can't do this job. It's an impossible job, anyway. And, but it's, it's, it's a job that if you don't have the support of the committee, who you are my bosses, and rightfully so, you, you press me to make the decisions in the best interest of kids, in the best interest of the parents that you represent, and the students you represent. So I thank you for that because that's why Brockton is always pushing to be great. And it's because of this committee, of what you put into it. And people forget the hours that you all put in for very, very little money. And it's not, you don't do it, obviously, for the money, because it's probably about a dollar an hour. But, you know, the, the meetings you put in, the phone calls you take, the times that we talk on the phone, people have to realize that, you know, it's a long, this is, this is a lot of work for you as well, all of you. And, you know, it's much appreciated, your support and everything you do for the Brockton Public Schools is, so I couldn't do any of this without you and the support of my executive teams and the great people that work in the Brockton Public Schools. I mean, I've been here, this is my 29th year, and it's just great people here. Families, students, staff, and it's just a great place to be. And I would be humbled if I was able to get a two-year extension because there's no other place I'd rather work. And I'd say, you know, I've said, "I'll be here as long you, as long as you'll have me here." So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Minicello?
I think it's very rare that communities these days in the Commonwealth of Mass have a superintendent that is a long-serving, long-term superintendent that the community overwhelmingly supports and who overwhelmingly supports the community. I think it would be a good thing for the city of Brockton and the residents and the school community to extend the contract because it shows stability. And that's what a lot of the districts don't have. There's always, you don't know how rare it is to have a, a, a school committee and a superintendent to have a relationship that I think we all have, you know, with our superintendent. It's very rare. You know, I've been, this is, this is my fifth superintendent, okay? You know, when I first came on, there was, you know, Buzz Nimbrough, and then it was, you know, Matt Malone. And then, then John Jerome was the, filled in. And then there was Kathy Smith, and now it's Mike Thomas. And, you know, I would say Kathy and Mike, you know, have roots here, as well as John Jerome. Those three, you know, are in-house, connected to the community. They were, they, they loved Brockton, and Brockton, you know, really cared about them. And I think, I have no hesitation to extend for two years because, again, I think it's beneficial for the students, stability at the top ranks of any school district is a good thing. And I just think, you know, I think Michael, as we all know, Michael gives it his all. The community, you know, all people in the community, of all, you know, of all races, of all ethnicities, everyone likes Mike, you know? Isn't that commercial? Everyone likes Mike, something like that. But, you know, and Mike's likes, and Mike likes them and us, you know? So I'm overwhelming in support of that. I think that stability, long-term stability for a school system like Hitless and Brockton is rare. And I still talk to Kathy Smith, and she tells me what's going on out there. The reason why Kathy Smith is employed right now, hopping around school district to school district, is because it's rare to find a long-term superintendent that the, that the communities out there feel comfortable with. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a hard, a hard goal to reach, to really find that one person that's going to spend a ton of time. So, yeah, I would vote in favor of it.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yeah, I mean, I do, Mike and I talk, I don't know how many times a day, good times and bad times. So I want to just echo the sentiments of what, of what Tom just said. I mean, first of all, the stability, right? But this is also so many projects in the queue right now. And to have a leader that gets it, and a lot of my quotes are up there, I don't know who picked them, but thank you for picking them. You know, he, he, he isn't just someone that grew up in Brockton and is a graduate of Brockton High, but he cut his teeth in BPS. And so, from a political standpoint, the state and DESI is going to look at, okay, the seven elected school committees and the mayor, you know, have confidence in the leader. And, you know, that, that speaks volumes. It does, from a political standpoint, on a Commonwealth-wide perspective. The fact that other municipalities, 351 in the Commonwealth, are really trying to find someone like Mike, and we have that person? We don't want to lose him, number one. And number two, he, he does get it because I have had frank conversations with him. And he takes suggestions and criticisms awfully well, but he also is a team player. And so from my perspective, if, if he's ready, willing, and able to stay an additional two years, I say we lock him in. I mean, that's just my thoughts. But I think it makes... I mean, that's just my thoughts, but I think it makes sense for BPS, makes sense for the school committee, but it truly makes sense for the city. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Sullivan?
I'm one of the senators for the, the comment is, for the last year, the last year before that, I'm glad Mike Thomas is in that seat. I don't know what we would have done if somebody didn't know what to do during this. This has been the worst year ever, or the year before. He bought a Stewart smelling like a rose, and I congratulate him for that. Nice job, Mike.
All right. If there's, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rodriguez.
When the contract's over in 2025, and what, how does that tie us up? Let's say the next, because none of us are promised to be sitting on this board in two years, four years, six years. How does that tie us into, because if he's under contract, what if that school committee that comes in later on decides to go in a different direction?
So there is language in the contract that does allow the school committee to dismiss a superintendent. Obviously, it's got to be for cause, and, you know, there's got to be reasons for that, I would imagine, you know? But, Mr. Minicello, if you want to jump in.
If a school committee does not care for a superintendent, they are going to separate. Like, if a school committee is embattled with a superintendent, there will be a meeting of the minds that it's in the best interest of the district. If the overwhelming majority want, do not get along with the superintendent, they will definitely work things out that they go in their own direction.
It's happened already here.
It was already, Mr. Sullivan can talk about that, the details, but, so you don't have to worry about not, I mean, long-term payouts, because it would be a short-term payout if there's ever a school committee that can't get along with the superintendent. They're not going to want to listen to the school committee, all of them chirping in their, in his ear or her ear, and be disgruntled and bad-mouthing each other. What I think, why, so why would you extend the contract? I'm going to tell you why. Because having a superintendent that everyone gets along with long-term is a good thing for a community. Because when his contract is close to being up, there may be other communities out there that are going to say to him, "Hey, you know, come over to Bridgewater, Rainham, or come over to somewhere closer to, come down to Plymouth, you know, it's right near your house in Halifax," or whatever. You really don't want to lose a good superintendent because it is hard to find them, I'm telling you right now. I've been involved in three searches, and it's a pain in the butt. And again, there's so much instability with superintendents. So I think it's a long-term good thing for a community to have someone that they have confidence in. I hear what you're saying, Tony, that, "Well, you know, we might not be around," or what have you. I mean, I think, I think that, I don't have, I don't have a problem with my conscience recommending Michael for a long-term contract or extending it because I think that he's going to be good for the community. I think Michael's balanced. I think he's very open to the community, listen, I mean, you know, listens to people. He's not, he's not, let me tell you something. The first superintendent I worked with, Buzz Nimbrough, it was his way or the highway, and he didn't care if you were on the school committee or not. Matt Malone, he was, he had a temper that you would not, he had, he was an interesting person. You know, it was, it was a very interesting person. So, long-term, I think someone balanced like Michael, Mike, I think it's a good thing for the, for the community. But again, if you get a school committee, you know, five years down the road, and they don't care for Mike, and it's the overwhelming majority, and Mike's not going to want to care for them if they're making his life miserable, they're going to, they're going to go their separate ways. They'll be, they'll be, they're not going to, they're not going to offer any long-term payouts because there'll be jobs available. You can't say, "Oh, well, we now have to pay Mike Thomas five years because we got him under contract." No, you're not, because there's a duty that he has to basically, you know, minimize, you know, the damages if there's, if there's opportunity available for him. And believe me, if he walked out the door today, there'd be plenty of opportunity for this guy, you know? He could go down to Cape or wherever he wants, I mean, seriously, and get a job. So, in a way, I know you're concerned about locking in a future school committee, but they're really not locked in because if there's cause, if there, if no one gets along with the superintendent, they're going, they're both going their separate ways, trust me.
The other thing, too, is...
And it's happened here at Brockton.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Look at the history of...
Oh, sorry, so, yeah, Tony.
Sorry. It's the same thing as saying, "Okay, we extend an extra two years." I mean, it's 2021, 2025 is four years from now. There's nothing that's a guarantee that he can stay here next year because he could still be offered jobs anywhere. So contracts are made to be broken, and we all know that. So I, Mike, I just think it's, nothing against you, Mike. It's just, you know, there's a lot of years ahead of us, you know, for us to make that decision. I would like to see like the incoming school committee members weigh on that. I mean, we have only, what, two more meetings left? You know, for them to make that assessment as well. You know, I wouldn't want to be that member that's coming in that, you know, you're locked in, you know, they have to make an assessment, they're going to do an evaluation as well. I just think it's a, it's a huge, there's years ahead of us. Anything can happen for us to actually jump an extra two years. That's my opinion on that, and I would love if this could be tabled and discussed with the incoming committee members that are coming in.
Well, I mean, that's, comes down to somebody making a motion one way or the other, either to approve the two-year extension or to table the discussion. You know, I mean, it just comes down to vote on that. But the other thing I'll add, again, I think to Mr. Minicello's point about stability for the district, which is a big part of it for me, is having stability in our leadership in the district. And the reality is, you know, Tom mentioned at the end, he can get the same money in a much smaller district, because I've looked at the numbers. You know, so I think that's a good point that you made of potentially being courted to go to another district. I'm not saying you would do that. But again, a future committee can still decide to part ways. But I think that it is an important move to show that there's going to be stability for the long term, because there's been some rocky things that have happened the last two years that we've had to face as a district. So personally, I'm going to support it because, again, it's about, you know, it's about having long-term stability, which I think is important right now for this district, given where we are and where we've been, so.
Make the motion to accept...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
I'll make the motion to extend Mike Thomas' superintendent's contract to two years.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. We'll do a hand vote. I'll... Oh, you want to do a roll call? All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
If they wanted to do the motion to table, like, how would that go about? You would do a second motion then?
No, he would have had, someone would have had to make a motion to table it. We would have taken an up or down vote on whether to table it or not. But we have a motion on the floor for an extension and seconded at this point, so we've got to put that to an up or down vote. Right, we can have further discussion on the motion, but at some point, either the motion has to be withdrawn or we have to vote it up or down, so we can have some further discussion.
I was just wondering, I mean, if you wanted to do the motion, I mean, this one's already on, but... Well, this one is not going to hold on now.
I mean, am I mistaken about that, Mayor? On parliamentary procedure, we have to...
You're correct under Roberts' rules.
Yeah, under Roberts' rules, we have to take this to a vote, and then if it fails, then obviously we could entertain a different motion. All right, so...
Without withdrawal, yep.
Or unless it was withdrawn. So just to be fair, are you interested in withdrawing your motion?
No.
Are you interested in withdrawing your second?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Mendez?
I don't have much information on that.
So are you abstaining?
So I'm abstaining.
Okay. And D'Agostino is a yes. Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
And Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have, and Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there was two no's and five yeses. Motion carries.
I thought it was one no and one abstention.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. One no, thank you. One no, one abstention, and five, five in the affirmative, so. All right, so that, that motion will go to the full, it's a recommendation of the full committee, so that's the other thing. That motion will go to the full committee to be discussed again, so it's not that there is another...
At that time, if someone wants to do a motion to table, I think they can.
Yeah, they can make that motion at the full committee, and that'll get an up or down, and then, you know, whatever happens from there, so. And I think we also need a motion on the evaluation, if I'm not, or a recommendation on the evaluation, and the corresponding retroactive increase, is that correct? Yep, so.
Motion to adopt the recommendation of the school committee on the...
You have to say the...
...results of the evaluation for a 3.13% increase paid retroactively to the... Do I have to say the date?
July 1.
July 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Minicello, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. I'll call the roll again on that. Minicello?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to vote yes. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. I think that's it. Do we have, we got the extension, we've got the evaluation, the raise, yeah, okay. All right, is there any other business to come before the superintendent contract subcommittee? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn, seconded, all in favor? We are adjourned.